Uh Councilman Anderson Land has thrown his hat and ring to run for mayor.
Yes, sir.
Uh what's your thoughts about that?
Well, I mean, I lo- I love a good, a good race, right? Um by working with uh Anderson Land on the council so far.
You're listening to Not on the Payroll, right here at notonthepayroll.com. You can check us out. At Facebook, check us out at YouTube, check us out at Rumble. Look for the gorilla with the red headphones and you are there. Like, share and subscribe. Today, we have the privilege of sitting down with Jasper City Councilman Rashad Lewis. Rashad, I appreciate you taking time with me.
No problem, any suppression.
It's been awhile.
It's been awhile, yeah.
It's been awhile, a lot of uh, a lot of uh, things have been happening, a lot of things going on. Uh what um, you know, you've been on the uh city council well over a year now.
Yeah, almost, it's almost a year.
Is it almost a year?
I think, I think May.
Yeah, May, May, may put you.
May make it a year, is correct.
So what would you say is the current temperature of city hall? Because I mean, I know. When people get in, a lot of times they uh, you know, they have to go through a figuring out stage. Figuring out process, but what would you say is kind of the temperature of the uh council?
Um currently, I would say the temperature is, is, is great. Uh it's different from when I first got in at May. So uh, because when I got in broadband, uh the Kramer thing um was like the topic of the city.
Right.
Uh which was a hot temperature in city hall, trying to figure out that, but um when all that dissolved and uh. As we moved on and we progressed, the temperature, we're kind of like in a good space, um no negativity. Uh no drama, we're just pushing forward, pushing projects and things like that, so. The temperature at this current moment, if you ask me, um is really good.
So the last time we talked, the last time we talked, you spoke on uh. Some projects that's coming up around the bend, skate park, pavilion, stuff like that. Where are we at for as that goes?
Um from what I got the other day, um they're working on uh mapping out everything with the pavilion. So if I'm not mistaken, the pavilion, the skateboard park, uh in the splash pad, should start going out for bids for construction. Um I hope that uh that doesn't take a very long time and that we can get everything maybe about eighty percent done. Maybe by the summer time and maybe have it opening kicked off by August and the later September.
Really? So that quick?
Yeah, so everybody is out there marking things, you know, so we can sort of put in bids out to have and figure out who will do all the construction. For all three projects.
Got you, very cool, very cool. So that's kind of a big undertaking this year.
Yeah.
That's really kind of the push and focus, I guess you would say.
Yeah, 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 to go ahead and get the things done for um the kids in the community.
Yeah.
Um give them something, I hear a lot of parents, it me as a, as a parent. Talk about what can my kids do, what activities can they have? So to have these three coming out around semi at the same time, I'm really excited as a councilman and as a parent to enjoy and to see. Um how it changes the atmosphere in the community with the young people.
So you still skate?
I haven't skated in awhile, so I gotta knock the dust. Oh yeah, I'm break, yeah. I don't wanna break my leg, but I wanna break the dust.
Breaks in skate park, it's kind of like when they, when they put the shovel in the dirt, it's gonna be like, this is the, this is the uh christening. So alright, taking a step back, going back to uh the hot topic when you came in broadband. What's the latest on that? Is Kramer, is it, that whole situation's completely dissolved or, or what's the situation at this point?
So what it is, is um the whole Kramer and the broadband thing has dissolved. I wanna say about a month or two, um I wrote a P three, right? Um just to see what major companies uh would be interested in partnering. Um and taking full responsibility of providing broadband, right? I think with the Kramer thing, that project was about the city going into the broadband business and making money. Uh the P three, the P three that I wrote was about the city collaborating with a major company. Um and we're not making a profit, but we're providing and we're partnering with a company to provide better broadband for the city as a whole.
Okay.
With no profit coming in uh to the city, it's just us partnering. And so I think this Friday. Or today, today will be the day that all of the bids come in and we'll have an ideal of what companies are interested. And what they're asking to go into partnership to make broadband be available for the people in there.
So we would be talking about potentially like major companies like AT&T potentially.
Is correct.
Major providers.
Is correct.
And so the big difference is before the city was planning on going into the business. So they were gonna take on the biggest, biggest lick.
Is correct.
Financially, this, this way, this direction is partnering up, the company actually takes the lick financially. And the city actually just part- partners with them.
Yeah, so yeah, it'd be a, it, the P three is written to be a deal to where like a major company. Let's just say hypothetically, if it was AT&T, we would partner with them, maybe a sixty, forty or whatever the, whatever the deal may be. But all of the legwork, all of the maintaining, all of the service providing would come from directly AT&T.
Okay.
We would just be in, in partnership with them to get the project kicked off, but maintaining it will come from them.
So then what you're, if, if it works out according to those numbers, then the city would have to step up forty percent?
Yeah, and, and AT&T will pay the biggest book, but we're just in a, a partnership with them.
Got you, got you, got you, okay. How does the city look to uh recoup that forty percent? What, how do, how does that work out?
To recoup it? Uh I, I think it's more, yeah, I think it's more of an investment to provide the better, better internet for the city, right? It not only for the residents, but you're providing a better fiber, uh fiber broadband to the businesses as well.
Right.
So I think, when I look at it as a whole, because there's no profit coming in. To me, I look at it as an investment into the community to give the area and even outside of the city limits, better internet uh access as a whole.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That, that's, that's one of the interesting parts about like five G. If you've been on five G, wh- is, why go back?
Yeah.
You know, I mean, if you've experienced five G, you know, some of the, some of these providers regionally.
Yeah.
Uh man, you're doing good to get LTE.
Yeah.
You know, so, you know, it's um, it almost seems like an imperative. Uh an imperative thing that's coming, coming across the bend, I mean, even across these small rural towns.
Yeah.
You know, just like Jasper, but Jasper's obviously got a bigger population than a lot of these little towns, but.
Yes, sir.
Um I know when we talked last, we had talked about alcohol in the park. Did we ever find a resolution on that? Did, did uh, was there uh? We had any issues at this point? Have we had any, have we had any events at this?
Um I think the last time we talked, I think we talked about it in the beginning of the food fest that was in September.
Right.
Um and that event, it went through smooth, there was nothing that happened. I think then after that, I think there was another big topic of Christmas at the park. But there was no alcohol allowed, there was no alcohol vendor. And from my understanding, this, the Christmas at the park went off with a bang, there was no incident, so since we've. Changed the ordinance about that.
Right.
Um and we have the controlling power of if there is a vendor, if there's not a vendor, there has been zero.
Zero issue.
Zero issues.
Okay, but as of right now, I mean, was, was there actual, was there alcohol sold at the, that first event you, you referenced?
Uh food show, yeah, at the food fest, there was an alcohol vendor. And even at that event, it was a smooth um event. Um Christmas at the park, there was no alcohol vendor on, onsite. And that was a, it was a successful event as well.
Does, does it look like that's something you guys are gonna look to um? You look, you're looking to more events coming in, coming this year?
So far, uh this year, it's the same two events. We're going to bring back the food truck, uh the food fest, food truck festival. Um September of this year, again, and maybe it'd be way bigger than it was this year. And Christmas at the park is, is a landmark uh event in the city. Beyond that, those are the two events that the city um hosts and they hold. Everything else is done by channels of commerce or someone outside the city. Where alcohol is not even um allowed at those events, right?
Okay.
So no, so at this point, there is no events I think they were coming out with as a city that would that would allow.
Yeah, I got you, okay. So uh I do know that uh back in early December, one of the other councilmen. Uh Councilman Anderson Land has thrown his hat and ring to run for mayor.
Yes, sir.
Um what is uh? You know, what's your thoughts about that?
Um, well, I mean, I lo- I love a good, a good race, right? Um by working with uh Anderson Land on the council so far. Um I can't see it, um that's just my, my opinion. Um because going for mayor, as someone who ran for mayor at the time, understanding that. Um it's a lot that goes into it, not just on the mayor's seat, but just on the council seat, right? Working with the other council members, that allows you as a mayor to have a great success record, right? When you know the body of government, the president, he's the president, but it's the senate, it's the house.
Right.
That does most of the uh controlling of the, of the government. So uh, so, so far, with, with Anderson Land. We haven't been able to really just, this is my opinion, we really haven't been able to really collaborate on a lot of things. A lot of the projects that we have and we have mentioned, he has been against and, and not in participation with trying to make it go forward. So I would love to see how the campaign goes, I would love to see how the race goes, I would love to see what he has to say about what he can do different.
Right.
But just from working and putting the projects that we have on the agenda and making it come true. To not be compliant to work with us, I would like to see what would be different.
Yeah.
If you was to become the mayor of the city.
Interesting, so I know, I know before we talked about proposition eight, which was specific about utility bills.
Correct.
And, and the city, it was restricting the city to, is it, what was the restriction, ten? It restricted it to like ten, what was it, ten?
Yeah, ten percent, I think the pro- well, from doing our, we're gonna proposition eight. Um prior to the proposition eight being voted on, uh there was a three percent cap that the city couldn't charge. Which means, that means no matter how bad the inflation got, no matter, no matter how the economy went. The city was at a three percent hold. By implementing the proposition A and allowing it to be on the ballot and allowing the people to vote. With the miseducation that there was a three percent cap, that it allowed the city to go from three percent to ten percent, right? Charge of utilities all across the board.
Okay.
Um currently, because of inflation, right? Uh we're not charging ten percent, but currently we are charging seven percent.
Okay.
So we went from charging three percent to seven percent currently at this moment due to where the economy is and how much we're paying for um oil and gas.
And I think I misspoke, I said proposition eight, but it's proposition A.
A, it is correct.
Proposition A.
Yeah.
Um so, okay, so basically, we're not at the cap yet?
No, but we're almost there.
We're almost at the cap.
That's correct.
Is there any chance of that going back down?
Um. Well, yeah, the way that the economy is going, probably be a minute, you know, if we go down, but it's hard to really say. I don't really know what we can do to try to reverse proposition A. But from what I, from what I understand, that proposition A, it sits inside of the city charter. Um which, which trumps the ordinance, the three percent was an ordinance that was for the city. But the charter, it always trumps the ordinance, so right now, it's kind of like law by in the charter.
Okay.
Ten percent.
Tell me this, so with, with your almost coming up on a year.
Correct.
What would you, what would you say is the hardest part about the position so far?
Nothing.
Nothing?
No.
Nothing's difficult?
No. Nothing, I, I know it's hard, hard to say, but um no, I mean, um I love creating. I love um doing things that would make the city better. The people who I sit next to, um after a while, you get to learn who they are.
Right.
Um and you get to build a relationship and a rapport with them. And so when you do that, um everyone is different, everyone from a different walk of life and different background. But when you have a love for people, then you find that common denominator between the two and you're able to relate and build a relationship, so. For the most part, at this current moment, um there's no difficulties, I'm really enjoying it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm enjoying it.
Do you feel like there, you know, the accusation against the city on some level out here on the street, we'll say. Um has been uh corruption.
Yeah.
Uh do you see any uh, do you see any of that?
Uh no, um I don't see anything, I think the thing about it is, I think we as the city or as a council. Should do a better job of creating the narrative, right? Um of what goes on inside the city hall.
Right.
Uh because no one really knows, right? It's really easy to take something and make it become true.
Right.
When there's no rebuttal from the city hall, no rebuttal from the council, nothing like that. So I think that we should do a better job of, I guess, attacking, not really attacking, but. Um having something to say about what people are saying that could not be factual, right? Um if we do that, then we control the narrative of what happens in city hall, we control the narrative of what people think about city hall. But until we do that, then you're gonna get the, the label of corruption, the label of things are going on because no one really knows and no one from the inside. Says anything about it.
Right, right, okay. What would you say to people out there that would say, oh, he's just kind of falling into the, to the clique? He's falling into the thing. I mean honestly, because I mean, you know, to be honest with you, you know, it, it, it doesn't take much research to realize. And granted, I mean, this is just a city position, but it doesn't take much, much uh research to realize. You know, a man seems to change a little bit once he's, once he's sitting in the seat versus when he's running.
Yeah, I mean, but I've been the same person since, since day one.
Right.
Um I've always came in with the mindset of how can I better the city as an individual? What, what things can I bring to the table? I know that people, like you say, they think different, um like different walks of life, they have different ideals themselves. From the city, but I think that when you come in and you're willing to work with people and not, not a battle, right? I, I, I think that there's too much fighting, right? And we get nowhere. Um we, we stand still when we, when we're fighting each other, but if we're coming together and what I think and what you think may be different. But if we can come to a common ground, that's how you get things done. So whatever labels you have, what people think about you, that's you, that's your image, that's what you have to do. But my deal is how can we come together and how can we put this project together? How can we get these streets fixed? How can we build something for the community that will last, even when we're not in office? I think that's the biggest agenda. What can we build that will outlive us, even in a position?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a good thing.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that seems like, that seems like it's a good thing.
Yeah, it's supposed to be, yeah. It's big, it's bigger than me, it's bigger than anyone that sits on the council, it's like, at this time that we have this opportunity. What can we as a whole create that would outlive us? Because like, like you say, May, people might be gone, next year, I could be gone. But at thi- at this time, what can we do? How can we work together to make something that's gonna be great for our kids and grandkids?
It makes sense, so in controlling narrative, I mean, obviously, you know, there's some talk about you guys um. Utilizing, is it a PR firm?
Yeah, I think it's like a PR marketing firm, um I wrote the, the P three on that one as well. Um what I wanted to do was, I wanted to do a lot of rebranding of, of what people think that Jasper is, right? Um I think people have came in, into the city just to get a story, right? Not knowing.
Sure.
The culture of Jasper, not knowing the essence, right, of, of Jasper. They just come in for a story, they create a narrative and they put it online and now people around the world think that that's what Jasper is. And so I really think it's very important that we go in and we rebrand the city from what people think. We show people what Jasper really looks like, um what it's really about. So that we don't look, or we don't seem to be the same city that was, that was in nineteen ninety eight.
Right.
Right, so I think that's very good if we're trying to grow as a city. If we're trying to bring things into the city, then we need to rebrand the city for what it really is and not what people come in just to get a story, just to sell.
Yeah, just to sell, sell uh tickets.
Yeah.
Yeah, to the circus. Do you feel like Jasper's changed a lot since nineteen ninety eight?
Um I believe that it have, um I think we need to do more of showing, right, the change. Um and like I say, us showing and not someone coming in and trying to come in twenty years later. After James Byrd or whatever, and, and giving their lens of what change has happened, right? I think that's why it's very important that we show the growth, not just in the city. But the growth that the school, the growth between the communities, you know what I'm saying, the rebuilding of how we move together and how we come together at different events. All those things are great things that people need to see.
Yeah.
Right? And I think once people see that, it would change the narrative of what people think about outside of here. And it's our job to do that within side.
Having said that, what do you think are some of the big markers of change since ninety eight? I mean, because, you know. Just here recently. Another video comes out on YouTube. And it's addressing the James Byrd situation, the James Byrd murder. And um. To me, I grew up in Jasper County.
Correct.
It's infuriating. For me as a residence.
Yeah.
Or a resident in this region. To watch this stirring of the pot. And a constant racial tension narrative. When you, honest to God, I mean. It just doesn't, it's, that's, it doesn't seem like, nah, I'm white, so I mean, you know. On this side of the table, on this side of the table, I'm sitting here going, man, you know, we've talked about race relations before.
Yeah.
But it, it is very annoying. Now, I'm, I'm all for, I mean, there, there are a number of. Let me, uh, let me PG this, but there are a number of jacked up.
Yeah.
Situations.
Most definitely.
Throughout the region.
Yeah.
That should be investigated to the fullest, should be in, you know, so. While there's this whining of some of this.
Yeah.
Still res- we're, you know, still here, that's not what, that's not what I see the community representing.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? You go to city in the park. What do you see?
I think uh, and it goes back to the narrative, right? I think because um outside of the city. All people know us for is James Byrd, it makes us a very easy target to come in to grab, like I say, a racial um story. Uh I think that we are bigger than what happened in nineteen ninety eight.
Right.
And I think that we've grown tremendously since then.
Sure.
And that's why I think it's our job to change that narrative, right? To rebrand the city in a way where we show the world that we're bigger than what happened, right? Um you're gonna find a racial incidence and a racial tension in every small town, every major city. It's not, it doesn't just exist here.
Right.
It's something or, or, around the globe, but until we as a city grab a hold of what people think, right? And address it from within and, and show the world something different, then people are gonna continue to use us as a pun. To stir up something and, and you're gonna come in to interview people and get the one-sided story. When as a whole, we should move as one and we should be united as one, not just as a community, but every department of the city. That's why I think that's very important that the PR comes in and we show the world something totally different, right? So when you come, you have something different to talk about.
Yeah, cuz it almost seems like it's, it's, it's at the expense when, when these groups come in. To do their narrative or tell the story that they think is here.
Right.
It's almost like it's used to stoke a national flame.
Yeah.
That's what's disgusting to me.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, it. It's just, it's kind of like um, uh it's just race mongering. And really in a lot of ways, you know what I'm saying? And uh anything that we can use, any story that we can find.
Yeah.
Let's, you know, it's like they go on Google and they look.
Yeah.
And they're like, oh God, you know, here's a little town that we can go, we can go kind of tell this story. And here we go, as if it's not been told a hundred and one times.
But see, I think about it, when you Google Jasper, what do you get?
Exactly.
You, you get that narrative from what Google says and, 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 and what stories that happens inside the city. When you Google it as someone outside, you would think nothing has changed, right? When you look at the articles for the last ten, ten, twenty years, it's kind of like in the same lane. I think it's our job to flood, flood Google, flood every, every platform of, of, of research with what we are today. And where we're trying to go, right? If, if you don't know where we're gonna go, then how can you follow what we're doing? So I think it's our jobs to go in and flood Google, flood every platform of where we are as a city. Showing the beautiful landscape that we have, the activities that we have, how we're growing as a whole. Makes it really hard for someone to come in then and try to repaint what we've already painted.
Right.
Right, but if we're not painting anything, then we leave a canvas open for anyone with any narrative to come in and paint it any way they want to.
All the same narrative over and over and over.
It is correct.
So I guess my question would be, do you feel like, now, I, I don't know if this is the case or not. Has uh, uh mayor Sayers, has he thrown his hat back in the ring? Is he, is he retiring or is?
Um no, no, I think, I thi- I think he's running again.
Okay.
I see it on KJS, eh, right now it's down to him and Land going for the, the mayor's.
Going for the mayor's, okay. Do you feel like that's been, I mean, you feel like that's been an overall failure, it's just not controlling the narrative?
You're talking about as a city or just?
As a council, because I mean, it, cuz in all honesty, I mean, you know, you see. Other mayors speaking up and communicating about what's going on in the community. You know, I mean, do you feel like, do you feel like that's been a failure on the mayor's part?
Uh I wouldn't just say him, I would say that uh if I look at the history of mayors, right? If I look at the history of mayors, I look at the history of council members, we've never had a platform. Or we've never thought about using our platform to create a narrative, right? I think we've always been um, uh reactive to what people come in and say.
Right.
But we've never been proactive. So I think what we're trying to do now is not only give the mayor a platform or whoever that person may be, or even council. But just give the city as a whole a platform to be able to speak and to show. Um where we are and where we're going as a community. I think it's, it's not a one individual thing, it's a body.
Right.
You know what I'm saying? Of people of the city that stands and show the world who we are and what we're about.
So I think when you say that the city has not had a platform.
Yeah.
I think the local radio station would, would probably say otherwise. Just in the fact that there's been numerous uh at least invitations.
Yeah.
Thrown out. You, I mean, you feel like, I mean, do you feel like you guys are gonna be kind of, be able to kind of navigate around? What you feel like is local media or, I mean, I.
Yeah, I mean, I think um media, you, you pick and you choose which, which you want to talk about, right? Um if it's, if it's going to be vital information, that information is only dictated about who tells the story. But I think there's little things that we do as a city that is very important to some people, um and that story needs to be told too.
Right.
Right? If it's just the, the man is in the hole at three o'clock in the morning, stopping the water, right? Fixing the pipes, those are things that are heroic, um that may not be that big of a thing for a major story. But as a community, it's something that we need to honor, we need to praise, right? The people who's on the, who's fixing our lines, telling those stories, like the little things that may not be a big clickbait for media. It's very vital because we are a small community.
Sure.
And we should pay homage and give honor to the ones that's everyday doing what we do to make the city great, right? We're telling the inside story and not the story that make, make media a top story, right?
Interesting, so one last, one last question specific to Anderson Land.
Alright, go ahead.
Running for mayor, um what's one thing that you feel like he's done well since he's been a councilman?
I can't, I, I can't, I, I don't have a, I can't.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just.
I mean, I'm, I'm being.
I mean, my, my wife may say the same thing about me.
Uh huh.
You know, so if I was to put her on the spot, but I mean, I'm just saying.
No, 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 I'm, I'm being transparent and honest, uh there's nothing that I've seen, right? Um even in my time being here, um the things that we've, we've been fighting to do. Uh there's nothing that I've seen him come to the table and say, hey, as an individual, this is what I want to do, this is what I wanna see. And how can we make this become reality?
Right.
So I haven't, I haven't seen it, so.
So there, there's some people out there who's gonna think this is a hit piece on Anderson Land. And which is, which is not, cuz we didn't even talk about none of this, so, you know, um. You know, but it is interesting whenever you have, whenever you have a councilperson who's running against the current city mayor. Uh and granted, I mean, I'm, 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 I'm always down for a dogfight. Not, not a Michael Vick.
Yeah, I, I, I love a good race, man. Yeah, I, I lo- I love to see. I love to see what, what people bring to the table. And so I'm very, I'm really interested to see how the race goes and, and.
And I, you know, you know, regardless of what happened last year, may, maybe uh. Maybe we could potentially bury the uh, bury the hatchet between me and the mayor, but nonetheless, we'll uh. Yeah, I'll, I'll cross that bridge when we get there and hopefully we'll sit down and talk to him, kinda talk to him about what his vision is, so we'll see.
I hope, I hope you do.
It'd be fun, um, you do a symbolic bearing of the hatchet, so. But nonetheless, now, man, uh, I personally, uh, you know, as if it's, you know. For the people who showed up to city, uh, the Christmas in the park, I thought Christmas in the park was great, man.
Yeah, like I said, I think we're doing.
I thought it went well, and I mean, I'm glad to see the projects moving forward.
I think, I think we have a, a lot of great things that are, that are going on. Um, and I think that we're just trying to light on a lot of the things that are going on.
Any last statement to the people?
Um, I'm just, I'm happy to serve. I'm happy to be, I'm happy to create. And so I'm looking forward to cutting the ribbon. On the Skateboard Park, the Pavilion, the Splashpad, I'm ready to cut the ribbon on it. Yeah, I'm ready to see what happens in the summertime. I'm working on a few things. Um, to put in the summertime, uh, a few projects that I would like to do. That would be very, very interesting uh, for the city. Yeah, so I'm ready for the summertime, yeah.
Ready for summertime.
Yeah, ready to, to un- unravel the new things if I'm allowed to do it.
There you go. Very cool. Well, good luck, man. Good luck in the uh, in the pursuits and uh, we'll sit down before the end of the year again. And we'll kinda get some updates and uh, and see if you uh, you uh, are still on target with what your, what your projections are.
Most definitely.
Ladies and gentlemen, you've been listening to Not on the Payroll right here at notonthepayroll.com. Check us out at Facebook. Check us out at YouTube. Check us out at Rumble. Always look for the little window red headphones and you will have found us. Like, share, subscribe if you like this kind of content. And we appreciate everyone for listening.